County Commissioners Board of Work Session, it is Wednesday, April 20th, 2022. It is 10:09 a.m. This is set to go until 11:00 a.m. This is a hybrid meeting and it's been, it's from Building 1, Room 280. This has been livestreamed through our Thurston County YouTube channel. If you would like to be in attendance, the call-in number is 360-252-9020. PIN number 1234. The item on our agenda is the petition for formation of Patterson Lake Management District. I am Carolina McKea, I am the Chair of the Board. Today, we have Public Works staff, Vice Chair Ty Menter joining us via Zoom, Commissioner Gary Edwards in the boardroom, as well as County Manager Romeo Chavez, and Assistant County Manager Robin Campbell, Director of Public Works Jennifer Walker, as well as other staff members who are joining. So with that, I will go ahead and pass it to Tim? Okay, Tim.
Perfect, thank you. Good morning Commissioners Romero, Robin, Tim Wilson, Water Resources Manager with Public Works. We also have Paula Cracknell in the briefing, who is our Aquatic Resource Specialist for Public Works. Today, we are intending to talk to you about a petition received from the Patterson Lake community for the formation of a Lake Management District. We want to talk about the formation process itself and some key decision points for the Board if you so choose to go through this formation process. The briefing is in advance of a May 3rd agenda item regarding consideration of the petition for Patterson LMD. And what we are hoping to get out of this briefing is just to, first of all, inform you of the guiding RCWs for Lake Management Districts, to talk about that formation process and those key decision points for the Board, and to be able to identify, understand, and address either today or in the coming days, any questions that you may have about the process. Before we move on to the slides, just a very brief overview about LMDs in general. LMDs as an organizational structure option for communities are governed by RCW 3661. And the legislature, in considering LMDs, established that public interest regarding LMDs do several things, that they promote conservation and stewardship of both shoreline and upland properties, and that any management approach should include long-term strategies to reduce nutrient inputs. And the legislature specifically speaks to fertilizers, septic systems, pet waste, and also speaks to the importance of vegetation and other aquatic organisms. And I mentioned "public interest" because that is the key phrase in the RCWs and in the formation process that the Board will need to consider at two points in the process. There are two ways in which the consideration of an LMD can be triggered. Those are through a direct resolution by the Board of County Commissioners, or by a petition by the Lake community itself, which we have in this case. That petition, the requirements for those petitions are that either 10 landowners from the community sign that petition, or 20% of the acreage of the proposed district is signed on to that petition, whichever of those is larger. In this case, the 20% acreage obligation has been met. The petition must also include, and Paula is going to talk more specifically about the petition down the road here, but by RCW, the petition must include the nature of actions to be financed, the amount of funding to be raised, it needs to include information on how that financing will be raised, either through rates and charges, any special assessments or bonds. In this case, it is specifically rates and charges. It should also address the number of years proposed and the proposed boundaries of the district. So with that, if we can go to, oh, okay, great. So the four topics we're going to address today, Paula is going to talk about Thurston County Healthy Lakes Program and the options for lake communities that want to organize. She'll talk about the petition overview, give a little overview of the petition itself and what the community is proposing to do. And then I will walk us through the formation process and the individual steps for that, as well as key decision points for the Board in that process. And then lastly, we'll talk about county management of LMDs, talk a little bit about roles and responsibilities, and some strategies for improving the LMD experience based on lessons learned for both the communities and for the county. So with that, if we can change a slide.
Good morning, I'm Paula Cracknell, Aquatic Resource Specialist at Thurston County Public Works. And as Tim mentioned, I'm going to talk to you about options for organization for lake communities. They have several options, and these include lake associations, homeowner associations, special use districts, and lakes management districts. Each of these options has various advantages or disadvantages, and are all guided by various statutes. Lake associations are good for well-organized communities, and they are typically formed as nonprofit LLC and funded through membership dues. Their activities are managed by volunteers, contractors, or consultants, and the members of the lake association assume all liability for these activities. Only owners who choose to contribute pay for the activities, so there's an option to not be involved in the projects that the association is proposing. This is a flexible and voluntary system. They are not bound by county policy, however, they must adhere to state and federal policies. Homeowner associations are different in that they are permanent organization with dedicated funding through dues to each homeowner within the homeowner association. Their actions are dependent upon an active association board, which can be elected or voluntary, and they may not represent the entire lake. Special districts are self-governing by an elected governing board. They have an unlimited lifetime, and their activities are managed by volunteers, or hired out to contractors or consultants. The special district itself assumes liability of all activities and manages all permits. They are not bound by county policies, but must adhere to state and federal laws. Lake Management Districts are formed by a county-administered program. County staff are the program administrators and subject matter experts, and provide input into work plans and long-term goals. The county assumes liability for all the approved activities and manages all permits for the LMD. They are subject to county policies, and the steering committees are made up of a voluntary committee or an elected committee, which is managed by county staff, and they must adhere to applicable policies and laws such as the Open Public Meeting Act and the county administrative rules. Patterson Lake recently submitted a petition for formation of an LMD to Thurston County Public Works. And the goals for their LMD and proposed activities were outlined in the petition and are presented to you here. To maintain a healthy and ecological balance of humans and wildlife in the lake to ensure the safety of boaters and swimmers, to employ best-practice techniques to ensure environmental effectiveness and safety, to contract with an environmental consultant firm to conduct an integrated aquatic vegetation management plan to assess the condition existing of Patterson Lake water quality and identify aquatic plants and noxious species. When the IVAMP is complete, implementing that plan. More on their goals and proposed activities is to control nuisance levels of aquatic vegetation, noxious weeds, and non-native aquatic plants as approved by the IVAMP developed for Patterson Lake, to reduce toxic algae blooms and rapidly increasing weed growth, conduct regular water quality testing to identify lake nutrients and possible pollution sources into the lake, to educate and inform the Patterson Lake LMD members on lake water quality and management issues, including toxic algae blooms, nutrient levels, and boating safety via e-newsletters and regular Patterson Lake Management District steering committee meetings.
Thank you, Paula. So as Paula mentioned, there are four different organizational options for communities who would like to form. Each of these organizational structures have very different processes for formation. In this case, the community has opted to have the Board consider an LMD. This is a lengthy process. It typically takes, in the neighborhood of 10 to 11 months, from the time the petition is received, to go all the way through formation, should it be formed. The first step before we get into the Board actions and processes was for staff or Paula to receive the petition and truth-check the signatures, the petitioners, against the parcels within the proposed area, to make sure those all match up, to make sure that the requirements of the RCW was met. So do we have a minimum of 20% acreage? Do we have all of the conditions that were discussed as requirements of the RCWs met in that petition that goes forward? Once that is done, we, and following this briefing, if the Board so chooses, we would go down the road of bringing these eight Board actions forward, and I will talk a little bit more in detail about the individual steps on upcoming slides. So the first step, and the step that is on the agenda for May 3rd, I believe, is consideration of a resolution of intention. So the resolution of intention does several things. First and foremost, it validates the petition received. It talks about the steps that staff has gone through, and that it meets all the statutory requirements for a valid petition. It outlines what an LMD is and how it will be managed. It communicates the proposed purpose of the LMD at a very high level. It outlines proposed rate structures and estimated revenue generated. It sets a time period for the LMD, which in this case is 10 years, and it outlines the proposed LMD boundaries. And those boundaries can be found as an appendix to your documents. So at the time of that resolution, this is the first of two major decision points for the Board to consider. And this is directly from RCW 3661-030. And the two questions are, is the creation of the LMD, does the creation of the LMD appear to be in the public interest? So, public interest again goes back to those points that I outlined regarding stewardship of the environment and having a long-term strategy for pollutant reduction and nutrient reduction. The second question is, is the proposed financing of the LMD activities feasible? So this would be a time for the Board to consider the rate structure that is being proposed by the Board or by the community. Is it enough to support the general activities without needing county support or other funding options, and for the Board to weigh in on that? If the answer at that point appears to be yes, doesn't need to be definitive, but if it appears to be yes, then the next step would be for the Board to set and hold a public hearing regarding the resolution of intention. So the defined purpose at that public hearing is for, to hear objections to the resolution of formation from affected parties. This would not only be advertised, as we do most legal notices, but it would be sent to each individual affected property owner, including state agencies, so that this has a, this lake has a boat launch, Department of Fish and Wildlife would be notified as well. At this point, prior to the public hearing, staff would add, and this is coming from lessons learned regarding past LMD formation processes, staff would add a constant contact webpage for the proposed LMD, in which we would include the petition itself, the proposed activities, the rate structure, administrative rules, and any other pertinent information for assisting the community in being informed about what is being proposed, for getting a clear understanding of what that means and how the lake would manage the LMD, so they can provide good feedback at the public hearing. Following the public hearing, that is the second major decision point for the Board, and if the B O C C determines that it is still in the public interest and feasible in terms of funding, they would authorize a vote of the community via resolution. So this is the second major decision point for the Board, and should it get to this point, then the decision-making for the Board lessens as we go forward. So step four would be just that. A Board would be authorized, we would send out ballots to each of the affected parcels. I believe there are, Paula, help me, I think there's 604, 605 parcels roughly out there. And it would be just a simple question, shall the Lake Management District Number 23 be formed? We would recommend having a reference on this ballot back to the website, so voters could get information before making their decision. The affected property owners would evaluate information on designated county webpage, thanks Paula, which again would include the petition from residents, the resolution of intention, and LMD info, including administrative rules and other relevant information. Important point here, per RCWs, that voting is weighted. So in this case, the community has proposed a rate structure that has several different classifications, but the main classifications would be either for a lakefront-developed parcel or an upland-developed parcel. The rate structure is $510 for a lakefront versus $77 for an upland. And the way the voting is weighted is that each dollar of assessed value gets one vote. So a lakefront-developed parcel would receive 510 votes, and an upland-developed parcel would receive 77 votes, I'm sorry. And that is about a 6.2 to 1 ratio. The LMD is formed by a simple majority of the ballots returned, and if a simple majority is not reached, the LMD process stops at that point. The next step, step five, should the ballots come back in the affirmative, the Board would adopt an ordinance establishing the LMD, which would include the following: conditions for district operation, the rates and charges information, and language aligning the rates with the Assessors Office Senior Citizen Exemption Program. At that phase, the district is formed, and the upcoming steps are more administrative in nature. So step six and seven would be for staff to create a special assessment rule. And what this would look like is, is a list of all the affected parcels by parcel number. It would have the category that ties back to the petition, so upland parcel owners, lakefront parcel owners, all the different categories, the name and address of that parcel, and the assigned rate for the parcel. This would be, again, put out on the website. Affected property owners would be made aware of this. The Board would be required at that point to hold another public hearing with the specific purpose of hearing objections to that role of assessment. So this would be when a property owner looks at the role, identifies that they are classified incorrectly. It's not to argue or debate the charge, it is to identify the county that there has been a mistake, so it's an administrative process. Following that public hearing, next slide, Paula, please, thank you. Following that public hearing, and based upon those comments, the Board would either adopt the special assessment rule by ordinance, or they would amend the special assessment rule if any information is inaccurate. So that concludes the process, and at that point, the Lake Management District is formed. So at that point, annual rates and charges are added to the annual property tax statement, so all of that information would be forwarded to the treasurer, similar to what we do for the stormwater utility or the current Lake Management Districts in November. Those would be added to the tax rules. If the community chooses, county staff will establish a steering committee to provide input. And the reason I say that, and Patterson Lake has indicated that they would like to have a steering committee, and we recommend it, but the reason I mention that is that steering committees are not referenced in the RCWs, and some jurisdictions have ran LMDs without steering committees. At that time, short and long-term work plans are developed by county staff with input from the communities. As we've previously talked about, an integrated aquatic vegetation management plan is developed for that specific lake. So this is where we would talk about, you know, the different issues in the lake in terms of nutrient loading, vegetation issues, perhaps algae issues, and we would also talk about conservation and stewardship, long-term strategies, pollutant reduction, nutrient reduction, those types of things would be included in that IVAMP before we move forward with any activities other than education. The roles and responsibilities for management of the LMD are defined in the LMD administrative rules and clarified at that point, and alignment with greater county initiatives and guiding principles would be a priority. So what that means is we would manage any oncoming LMD to make sure that there is adherence to our integrated pest management policy, that the messaging and education is in alignment with our storm and surface water utility messaging, which also talks to pollutant reduction, best management practices for communities, and those types of things. And then, then we have a formed LMD at that point, and we are rocking and rolling. So are there, are there any questions on the petition, on the LMD process?
Thank you, Tim. Can you stop, or can someone stop sharing the screen? I'm not sure. Just triggering it. Thank you. Questions? Commissioner Edwards?
Yes. Where are we at right now? Did we get a bond, or will we put money up, or where are we at?
Where we are in the process is the community submitted their $5,000 bond to begin the process, and that is-
Let me interrupt you there.
Sure.
I thought that we had agreed to cover the cost of the bond.
I thought we had too.
You set aside money to consider.
I thought we were going to cover the bond.
Well, this is your opportunity to consider, because you set aside $50,000 to deal with a lot of requests related to LMDs. As a result of that- As a result of that, the board will consider on a case-by-case basis, that's my recollection, whether you want to subsidize the 5,000.
We asked for 50, that was the budget request. It was approved at 10.
At 10, thank you.
Right.
And the process alone, based on past experience with Summit Lake in that process, runs about $10,000 to $12,000 for the formation process. We were also asked to develop a lake program, which we are in the process of doing, we've updated the website.
Well, no, I'm not questioning that, but I am questioning the $5,000. We specifically talked about that and agreed to cover that way back, we have a year or so ago, a couple of years ago maybe.
Well, last year, the conversation, we decided to just set aside 10,000.
Yeah, to cover this cost, right.
Not to cover the bond specifically because we wanted it to be a little bit more prescriptive. There was a lot of conversation on whether it should cover the bond and we decided just instead to set aside $10,000. That's my recollection of it, but it was not to pay the bond.
Okay, well, I don't want to tie up everything on that, so let's hear the rest of what Tim's got, can we?
Okay.
Yeah, no, I mean, so then on the public hearing that we would have, it's specifically to hear objections? Does it say in there just objections or can people come and justify in favor?
Typically, the board has allowed comments in favor as well. I'm referencing the RCWs, which speak specifically to objections. So the statutory-
These two public hearings.
Two different.
Yeah, and I believe perhaps Commissioner Edwards is asking the second public hearing, when the rates and charges have been perhaps established and somebody comes and make a recommendation, perhaps they have been assessed wrongly. Is that what you're asking on that public hearing?
Well, I just wonder about, anytime we have a public hearing, we usually, usually hear both sides of the story. I approve, I like this idea, or I don't like this idea.
So that is on the first public hearing?
I know, but it says in the material to hear objections. I just wonder if they can also refer to in favor of.
I'm sure, I'm sure they could.
But does the RCW specifically say just objections?
Yes.
So we went through that internal conversation.
That's because you are at step, what, is that like step six?
Step six is where the objections comes to play. At the beginning, the first public hearing, the board procured public testimony, received public testimony from the individuals affected, whether they'd like to form an LMD or not. And that's what probably would have, I mean, remember Summit Lake, was on the first step is where everything stopped because there was a significant amount of members who did not support the formation of the LMD. So there's, there is a solution that been ten by the board did not go through.
Right. Right, right. So by the time you're at a step six, if I'm understanding this right, you've already formed the LMD and this is just the review of the assessment role?
But I think if I, if my steps two and three, if we go to slide 12, that public hearing, also the language in the RCW is specifically to hear objections. But I think the, I think the board can allow comments pro or con.
Discretion of the chair or something, I suppose.
People are gonna come and say what they want to say, no matter what the topic is.
I don't want to ask, I don't want to try to cut them off, maybe the chair does, I don't see. She's braver than I am. So, how about, you mentioned, you made mention of a map, but it's not in here. It was a boundary. At least I don't have mine, you, does anybody else have it?
Should be included with the packet, apologize if you didn't get that.
No.
Okay.
Could we get a copy of that?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Would you like that now or would you like that?
Well, just put with my material when we're done here.
Yes.
Yeah, because I don't, I mean, I'm sure we'll get asked.
Right.
What about this or that?
I believe it was in the PDF packet that came over.
It's out, I'll make sure we get a copy.
Okay, Commissioner Mancer, questions?
Yes ma'am. So, did this particular group, I know there was talk about community outreach and should Paula be out there, shouldn't the county be promoting or is that not appropriate? So I'm wondering if this group got, this group in particular got a full exposition of the pros and cons of each different form because it seems like we've had question, we've got two different types in our county now. We've had, it seems like we've got problems with certain Lake Management Districts kind of pushing the boundaries of that relationship with the county. And is that, I want to make sure that they're proceeding down the path that's right for them. And not get in a situation where they form a Lake Management District, not understanding that there are very clear, Tim and I, Tim, you and I discussed this, there are very clear side rails that don't exist in some of the other forms.
Yeah, they were definitely made aware of the different organizational structures. I know that occurred at least in one virtual meeting with the proponents, a small group of proponents for this. Paula could probably speak better to any conversations that were had. I know that she worked closely with the community informing that. We're also trying to dial that in a bit, Commissioner Mancer, within the rules and, and within these administrative rules, which the resolution of intention would reference. So in those administrative rules, it would kind of outline those specific roles and responsibilities and try to get ahead of that ambiguity in how we manage LMDs. Paula, did you want to add anything regarding your conversations out there?
Yeah, there was significant amount of conversations between the organizing members of the Patterson Lake Association and I, where they asked me to talk to them in great length about the different structures. And I have attended several presentations with members of their board to discuss this with them and the LMDs, what they decided that they wanted to go with as a community.
So one of the things that I, that I heard from the Black Lake Commissioners is that they went down this same path to form a LMD. But they were told by the LMDs, the county's going to take all of your money for administrative costs. So they decided to go the route of a special district. Now, since then, our LMDs have objected to that, to those costs. And we've agreed on a case-by-case, year-by-year basis to provide subsidies. So I'm wondering what the expectation is of Patterson Lake's group in terms of whether they're going to get the money that was the deciding factor for Black Lake to become a special district, not an LMD?
Commissioner Mancer, I'd like to speak to that. I know that I have heard in some of our conversations with the community out there, the question of will the board be supporting our inter-fund cost? So that I know that at least a core group of the individuals are aware of the board's support of other LMDs and are tracking on that. So I think it's, would be really important for the board to consider that when they are asking that second question about the legitimacy of the petition and-
Is it financially feasible?
Yes.
Yeah, and even when the board consider, you know, the subsidy for the two LMDs, I think the board was cognizant of the precedent setting that perhaps they were maybe put on, on future LMDs. So it wouldn't surprise me really to hear the expectation from this petition. They may be along the same lines of taking a fund, so.
So, am I to understand from that answer that they know that we are doing it, but they also understand that we might not decide to do that for them or we might not decide to do that in the future for any Lake Management District? We're not legally required to provide that inter-fund subsidy?
That, that has been communicated to the core group of petitioners that they should not expect that. Whether that resounded with them or not, it may be another question, but they, that was communicated to them.
When you were talking about timing, you mentioned 10 years and you said in this case. And I'm wondering, why did you say in this case? Isn't, is it 10, is there flex, can they request more time, less time? Is it always 10 years for an LMD? What's the timing, what's the law say in terms of the timing of an LMD?
An LMD can be formed for variable time periods. The two LMDs that we're currently operating are 10-year LMDs. And previous versions of those, they have been, I believe, both five-year and three-year, if memory serves. The rationale that I've heard for that is that the formation process itself takes funds, the money, to form. So a longer-term LMD may be more cost-effective for the community in the long term.
Is 10 the maximum?
I can't answer that, I don't believe it is. Paula, do you know, answer that?
Okay.
I can get back to you on that.
The boundaries of the, of the properties, is that flex, do they have, does the group, the petitioners have flexibility into who they decide to include that would be subject to rates and charges? And what is the, what is their, what are the side rails of their flexibility?
Yeah, the RCWs allow for a lot of flexibility with how they apply boundaries to the district. It does not have to apply to the full, the full area of the lake. It does not have to apply to all of the properties within, within the area. So there's a lot of flexibility for the petitioners and how they bring that forward.
But, but then they have to be subject to a vote of that group that they choose?
All parcels that are included in the proposed boundary are, are subject to the vote.
I didn't understand, I understood, I understood generally what weighted voting is, but I didn't understand the formula. You had like 510 and 77 and I didn't get, where are you coming up with those numbers?
Well, the petitioners, per, per the RCWs, the petitioners are charged with developing a rate structure that in general should be commensurate with the benefit of the LMD. So it would stand to reason that if you are a lakefront owner with shoreline, you swim in the lake, you have direct access to the lake, that you would have more benefit to that. So typically, in these structures, the lakefront owners do have a higher charge. What's, what's important, I guess, maybe for the board as well, is in some cases, and the reason I brought the ratio up is because in some cases, you can, you can strategize to bring upland parcels along with you. If you have a six to one or seven to one ratio, you can include upland parcels and you, they don't have as much weight in that vote. So those lakefront owners can bring some of those upland parcels with them, if that makes sense.
So they can, they can basically decide the weighting between lakefront and non-lakefront and upland?
They can, they can define a rate structure that typically is more heavily weighted towards the lakefront owners. So yes, they, they can do that. I will add that in most cases, and in this case, that they can't just arbitrarily add upland owners that have no dated access to the lake. So they, the upland owners would typically have on their parcel some kind of shared access to the, to the lake.
I'm going to skip ahead, I have more questions on that, but I know we're short of time. On the IVAMPs, the, so this happened kind of when I was out of the office last month and I, I kind of missed my chance. I had a whole bunch of notes I wanted to ask you about in, in the meetings that we had in late February. But I know on the, my understanding from our discussion on the other two Lake Management Districts is that the IVAMPs are, are out of date or they haven't been updated or something like that. And I'm just wondering, in terms of forming a new, like, I don't want to be in that situation. So in terms of forming a new Lake Management District, can we put more, you know, like, they're going to be updated on regular intervals and that's going to be funded somehow? I mean, can we, can we solve that problem? And, and that ties to another question, I mean, can we solve all the problems? I mean, I'm sitting here on my desk with two letters from the last two months. One of a Lake Management District being abusive to staff, another with a Lake Management District inappropriate, inappropriately communicating with Department of Ecology. We've got IVAMPs that are out of date. I mean, I'm all for the democratic process and I'm all for the community being able to use these mechanisms to their benefit. But I want to get out in front of these problems that we've had so that we don't have the same issues with a third, yet now a third Lake Management District that we seem to be having with the others. So I'm just wondering, how can we get out in front of these problems that we know we're going to have, because we're having them? What's the mechanism for doing that? Like, for example, with the IVAMP? How do we make sure that gets done in the way it needs to be done so that the right stuff is in there and the right strategies are being implemented?
So to answer your question about the IVAMPs, what, what we have communicated to this oncoming community and what we've communicated to the board is that going forward, prior to any in-lake activities, there will be an IVAMP. And that the burden for that lies upon the, the community to develop that. We can assist them with applying for grants and assist them as much as we can with that. But there will be a management plan for these lakes. The question of updating them on a regular basis, we can definitely put that in the administrative rules and that would be a conversation for Paula and I to have regarding what the interval for that should look like. Probably, you know, six or eight years or something along those lines. As far as getting ahead of some of the, some of the issues with the Lake Management Districts that, you know, quite frankly have been a longstanding issue, decades, have been an issue and have been probably as much problem for the communities as they've been for, for the county, right? Because if you look at the, the way that those were formed, there wasn't a lot of definition, there wasn't a lot of conversation about what this means. So we are trying to take those lessons learned, try, trying to develop a framework, we have developed a framework that will hopefully improve that experience for any community coming on board as well as the county and trying to manage this. So, so that they're not in front of the, communities aren't in front of the board every three months.
Okay, I'll let it go there, thank you.
Thank you. My questions? I have, I'll be honest, some of the same concerns, not concerns, but what process that Commissioner Mancer has laid out, especially because I didn't meet with some citizens of Patterson Lake who were concerned about this process earlier last year. My question is in regards to the voting, the first part. I have many questions, but I'll start with that part of, one second, I'm trying to find it on my slides and my notes. It talks about developed parcels, but not really undeveloped parcels. So how, how are those going to count in the vote? So it's on slideshow, it's on slide 14, right? It's lakefront developed parcel and upland developed parcel. But it doesn't really talk about undeveloped parcels and how those property owners will be affected or how their voting is going to be counted.
So there are, and, and we had hoped that you had received this in part of your packet. We included the petition that was submitted. There are seven or eight different categories. And so I, I just used the main two categories. And so I, I just used the main two categories to, uh, as a point of reference and to talk about the, the, the vote and the weighting of the vote. Uh, in addition to lakefront developed, uh, there's also a second dwelling category for lakefront developed. Uh, there is a lakefront undeveloped, just a bare, uh, parcel. Uh, let's see. Upland dwellings with improved beach access, upland dwellings with unimproved beach access, apartments. There's a category for multifamily housing units. And there's a category for the boat launch, uh, the Washington State, uh, boat launch, similar to Long Lake and Lake Lawrence. They are applied a rate that is based on user days. So we'll, we'll make sure you get a copy, uh, of, of that, so you can have a look at it.
Yeah, we've got it here, they just haven't had the phone.
Oh, okay.
Jennifer got this for us.
Okay, thank you for going through that. Uh, my next question is, um, in regards to some of, um, the comments I heard earlier on about a promotion, um, of this, right? Um, and, um, when, I know there were several meetings where Paula went and gave them the information. Um, and also other members of other lake management districts went and attended those meetings. Um, and so I, I kind of wanted to get from Paula, when you were giving out this, this information, uh, to the Pattis- Patterson Lake. I, I mean, how, you know, I, I, I'm just, my fear is that, you know, I think the county manager man- mentioned it last year, right? The promote, that we're promoting people to get taxed. And so, um, I know when, uh, this, a particular citizen came and spoke with me, he straight out said, you know, it was the county who was promoting this. Um, and so I just kind of want to get those, that assurance that it wasn't that way, that it was Patterson Lake that reached out to us and it wasn't the other way around. Because the impression of some of the citizens that are not in favor of this is that we're the ones who are going over there and, and pushing the structure onto them.
Yeah, there's definitely no promotion for lake management districts, special use districts, lake associations, any of that that comes from the county. I respond to people when they reach out to me. And if they ask me to give a presentation, it's a presentation of facts for the steps that they'll need to take for whichever path they choose. So there's definitely no promotion from our part of Public Works that this is the best option for you. Um, it's just here are your options if you choose to do this. And then they decide and come back and say, we want to do this option and then we can help them with whatever route they, they choose to take.
Okay, um, it's ten fifty-eight, Commissioner, oh, County Manager, and then Commissioner Edwards.
Commissioner Edwards, I have a few more questions.
Go ahead, I got a few more questions, but I'm used to being cut off.
Can I, can I, can I, can I follow up on one point on, on that last thing? 'Cause I think it's important and, so, uh, um, Paula, Paula's spot on. We, through our website and through our communication with these communities, we are, we are trying to highlight the options, uh, for them available. But, but we have, in, in, from my perspective, I think we have struggled a little bit with a difference in expectations that are being set by representatives from other lake management steering committees, going out and, and engaging directly with these communities and, and setting in some cases false ex- expectations about inter-fund costs and, um, just management, uh, of these LMDs. So I, I just wanted to bring that up.
Uh, Chair, I do have to mention something.
Go ahead, sir.
We, we do have this, let's just say it's a rub, and let it go at that. We don't have any in-depth, uh, time for a discussion right now. I, I do feel that some of the lake management districts do feel that the county has not been as supportive as they thought they'd be. I think there's more to come on that. Uh, so, they look at it one way and I don't want to ever be in the position from a government entity to stifle free speech. And I would never want to be able to say to someone, hey, you can't go talk about this or that. What they're gonna talk about is their perception. I am a big advocate for trust of government and developing trust of government. We don't have the trust, for whatever reason, you end up with exactly what you're talking about here today. And, uh, Commissioner Mensah did bring up the fact that we had communication with, uh, the Department of Ecology, that, and I, I've heard that said that that was inappropriate. I don't believe it was inappropriate. I believe that anytime a citizen wants to contact their governmental entities at whatever level it is and have suggestions to make about how things should or should not be run, I think that is completely up to them. So that's where I'm at on that.
Commissioner Mensah?
Okay, we, we have a problem right there, because that's not how a lake, that's not my understanding of how a lake management district works. We stay liable, we stay in, we are helping to set the policies. We cannot have lake management districts saying eliminate the fish window for Thurston County when that is, uh, that is something set in order to help minimize impact to fish and wildlife. Um, and so if that's your conception of what a lake management district is, and that's what the citizens is, then we have, we have a problem. And that's what this whole thing is about. That's why I brought up these issues. Let's get it out so that if, if I'm gonna say this is in the public interest, I have to know that everybody knows what it is. And I don't think that you and I, Commissioner, are, are agreeing on what it is.
I, I'm just saying, I will never tell a citizen they cannot express their view to their elected or appointed officials, never. I, I'm, I'm not a big believer in Twitter either, uh, putting free speech on issues. So, anyway, that's just where I'm at. We have a difference, that's all.
County Manager?
Just a, a, a procedural steps, questions, um, doing, uh, and, uh, the May third, uh, you expecting the board to take an action on setting the public hearing, is that correct? Because I don't believe that you asking the board to take an action on the, on the, uh, resolution of intent. Just wanna make sure that we, we, we have that clarified. And I got another question for the board.
We, at this point, we would be requesting two actions at that May third meeting. We would be asking that the board adopt the resolution of intention and secondly, uh, set the public hearing at that point.
So, uh, like, I just wanna make sure the mechanics are, are, are clear, what the, what the board is planning to consider.
Yes, yes, and again, that's, that follows statute, um, so two actions on, on May third, should they keep it on the agenda?
Okay, and, uh, and, and the last part, you know, just to be, uh, uh, respectful of, of the conversation the board had during the budget process, that you set aside ten thousand dollars. And, uh, my recollection was for you to consider, on a case by case basis, uh, whether, what, why you like to subsidize or not. Here's the point, uh, uh, the Patterson Lake has submitted five thousand dollars as part of the bond. Is the board wants to subsidize that and take, and, and access the ten thousand dollars?
I want to subsidize it. That's who, that was my understanding that it was. That's what it was for.
Tim, are we supposed to do a tally of all of the costs to date? Because I think it's important for the board to have that information.
We could certainly do a tally of what's been expended to date and, and it is important for the board to consider that, um, you know, Paula's time in going out and talking to Patterson Lake prior, prior to receiving a petition and having those conversations with them is, um, i- i- is supported by that allocation as well as conversations that are ongoing with Offutt Lake and perhaps others. Uh, we didn't, didn't have a, a, a fund to charge those activities to prior to that. So that is being done, uh, as well as, you know, communicating out on websites and, and developing our website.
I think that this is going to take a longer conversation than the time we have, considering other elected officials were already over time for that meeting.
So I'll, I will bring this, this conversation on Tuesday morning, because it is important. And I understand the, uh, the additional cost, but, but, um, the board had a conversation on the five thousand dollars. And we knew from the beginning, the five thousand dollars is not enough to cover all the expenses.
No.
But the board, the board has the latitude and that was the intent, I believe, in the conversation of last year in the budget process, whether they'd like to subsidize the five thousand dollars. And I think that's probably had to be very narrow in, in terms of the conversation.
Yes, and what should and should not be covered?
Right.
Uh, go ahead, Commissioner Mensah.
I just want to say that my recollection on this is the same as Commissioner Edwards. I, I thought the five thousand dollars was, I thought we agreed to cover the bond, but I, I, I mean, I, I could be corrected. I don't have absolute certainty, but that was, that's my recollection.
So I'll go back and review the notes from the budget sessions. Or I'll ask staff to do that. I won't do it myself.
Yeah. Do that in your spirit.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.